But we do have a call. It is four o'clock.
We do have the call.
Yeah.
Excellent. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to open this meeting of the Executive Committee of the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission for Thursday, February 4th, 2021. It is a open meeting being done virtually pursuant to Governor's Baker's Executive Order dated March 12th. To be in compliance, I'm going to list the attendance verbally, so everyone knows who's here. I'm Kyle Hanlon. I am the delegate from the City of North Adams. We have Professor Roger Bolton, the alternate from the town of Williamstown, Cornelius Haas. Alternate, City of Pittsfield. Sheila Irving, delegate, City of Pittsfield, Malcolm Fick. You're the delegate from Great Barrington or the alternate?
I am the alternate.
Alternate from Great Barrington. Those are the board members. We also have in attendance Tom Atusco, Executive Director. Kate Hill Tapia, did I say that correctly? Thank you. And Mary Ann Snezak as well. John Duval, I miss John Duval because I can't see him. He's on the phone. John Duval, delegate, Town of Adams is also with us on the phone today. Well, moving on to the agenda, I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes of the Executive Committee meeting from January 7th of this year.
So moved. Irvin.
Thank you, Sheila.
Second, Malcolm.
Thank you, Malcolm. Pursuant to regulations, I will do a roll call vote. Kyle Hanlon, yes. Sheila Irvin?
Yes.
Roger Bolton?
Yes.
Malcolm Fick?
Yes.
Cornelius Haas?
Yes.
John Duval?
Yeah.
Thank you. I see we have a new attendee. We have Nancy Sosha.
Yep. Planning Board from Stockbridge.
Are you the alternate or the delegate? The delegate or the alternate, I should say.
I'm the delegate. I'm sorry.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Um, we just took a vote to approve the minutes of the last meeting. I don't believe you were here.
He's not, she's a non-voting member, Kyle.
Oh, okay. Well, welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Tom, for, I should know Stockbridge better than than I do. I'm sorry for that.
Well, it's really a matter of the Executive Committee. She's not on the Executive Committee.
Okay.
No, I'm visitor.
Oh, very good. Well, welcome anyhow. Good to have you here with us. And I think we have CTSB TV listening in and recording this afternoon as well. Welcome, everyone. Um, so the motion passed to approve the minutes. I'll move to the next agenda item. Financial reports, January expenditures reports. I'll look for a motion to approve the expenditures.
So moved.
Thank you, Roger.
Second.
Thank you, Malcolm. Any questions, comments, discussions?
Yes, I just had a, I'm curious about the very last item of subscription to Dunn and Bradstreet, I think it was. I'm just curious what service it provides us.
It provides us a database service of businesses. It's a very comprehensive database. That helps with some of our economic development work.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Then I'll move to a roll call vote to approve the expenditures. Kyle Hanlon, yes. Sheila Irvin?
Yes.
Roger Bolton?
Yes.
Malcolm Fick?
Yes.
Cornelius Haas?
Yes.
And John Duval?
Yes.
The most impasses. Thank you, everyone. Accounts receivable, report and assessments. Tom, any highlights we should be aware of?
Uh, no, I think it's fairly routine. Routine matters. I mean, there's a fair number, a fair amount over 90 days, but we're working as best we can to try to collect that.
Okay. Any, anyone have any questions for Tom? Hearing none. Thank you for the update. Uh, line of credit, I see is?
Right. We have used the line of credit this last month. There's a fairly length explanation in my Executive Director's Report.
Okay.
Be glad to, you know, kind of
No.
Explain that.
I'm good unless someone here needs clarification. Hearing none. Excellent. Uh, fiscal year 20 audit update. Is that you, Mary Ann, or Tom?
We're still working on it. They, we keep running files across the street and flash drives and we're still plugging away.
Is it taking longer this year or is it just the circumstances of the?
A lot of it is wood related and just the volume we have. Lot of projects. Yeah.
A lot of it is those circumstances as well. They said they're behind. It's, in some, in most instances now, or in this regards, it's the auditor is behind, you know, they're usually they're pushing us in in November, December. And now they've just getting around to it. So it's a, it's a little bit of both. I mean, we've, we've got a lot of work. A lot more projects and they're behind, so.
Curious.
Any other questions or comments? Great, thank you. Next item, anything under other for financials?
Uh, no.
Okay, great. Our next agenda item, delegate in alternate issues. Does anyone care to bring anything to the floor this afternoon?
I just wanted to say that I thought the last commission meeting was one of the most successful ones we've ever had. A lot of discussion, many different towns contributed and it was quite useful.
I thought so as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Roger. I think I thought so too. And I'm trying to figure out how we can kind of keep that discussion going at future meetings. Um, I, I think, and it's a little bit in my Executive Director's Report, but this community one stop grant program is gonna be a, it can be, I think, a terrific opportunity for communities to get development projects completed. But I think there has to be a thoughtful approach to it. And I'd like to have that, maybe some type of an open discussion about that at the March meeting. You know, what are some of the community development priorities that are facing communities of all sizes? You know, it's some of the smaller ones and the larger ones.
Yep. Sounds like a good idea.
Yep, I agree. Anything else to come to the floor? We'll move on to items requiring action. I'll look for a motion to approve the Subilla McGrath application to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Educational Regionalization Grant Programs. This will be a retroactive approval due to time constraints on the grant process. It's already been applied for it, but I would love to have a motion to retroactively approve this grant submission.
So moved.
Thank you, Sheila. Thank you. Thank you, Roger. I'll run the roll call. Kyle Hanlon, yes. Sheila Irvin?
Yes.
Roger Bolton?
Yes.
Malcolm Fick?
Yes.
Cornelius Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Duval?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Uh, anything else requiring action that should be brought up?
No, there's nothing under other.
No surprises. I like that. Committee reports, Regional Issues Committee, CJ?
Yeah, uh, I hope I didn't lose my place. Okay, there we go. Um, so the last, at our last meeting, we received a presentation from staff, from BRPC staff on the Clean Energy and Climate Plan for 2030. And, uh, basically it was the first step of our review. We're going to have a follow-on meeting on the 17th to review a draft letter from staff, but we had a pretty good discussion about multiple areas of the pa, of the plan ranging from goals related to electric vehicles, uh, to renewable energy product, uh, renewable energy projects to land use policies. So overall, it's a pretty thorough, and there's a plan from the Governor's Office. Um, so I think what Tom would say is there's no certainty that this will actually, you know, that there is a competing plan on the legislature, so we're not exactly sure, but this is our opportunity to comment on it. So we're going to meet again in, on the 17th with the idea of finalizing a letter that would be submitted prior to the deadline so that we're have an opportunity to comment on the plan.
Good. So I do have an, I do have an update. Just minutes ago, I got a email from, about this program, and they have extended the deadline to March 22nd, I believe. So we can actually have a, the committee can adopt these comments at the commission meeting. We'll have an opportunity to do that.
Yeah, great. Good. Sorry I had to leave that meeting early. It was a great meeting, but it's a little something arise at my house that needed some attention, but, uh, but it passed the point where I had meaningful input anyhow, anyhow, so. Thank you. It was a good meeting.
We received
Anything else you could add?
We received comments about your, I received other comments about your input, Kyle, especially about the heat pumps and the, um, the level of expertise you brought to that subject. So it was very useful. Thank you.
Oh, no, you're welcome. Just another day in the office for me.
I know, but it's, a lot of people don't have that expertise, so it's good to hear.
That's the one time it'll apply to this board probably. Thank you. Um, anything else before we move on to environmental review?
Not for me.
Thank you. Uh, Environmental Review Committee, Roger?
Yes, thank you. Tom's note mentioned that the individual members of the committee of not, not meeting, but corresponding with staff were looking at a cannabis outdoor cultivation project in Hinsdale. And, uh, we concluded that we would not, that it was not uh, useful for the VRPC to send comments. But I thought I would describe the project very briefly in the interest of full disclosure, and Tom can add something. So it was an environmental notification, ENF form, for a large outdoor cannabis cultivation facility in Hinsdale at a location called Bullard Flats. It would be a relocation of a smaller existing operation in Hinsdale. The operation formerly was a gravel, the property formerly was a gravel pit and operations ceased there between 2006 and 2014. A little over two acres, most of it outdoors, but with the one building nearly 11,000 square feet for processing and administration and four small greenhouses. Now, this project uh, is under MIPA review only because it is in an area of critical environmental concern, an ACEC, which is called Hinsdale Flats. It triggers no other thresholds. And actually, the typical environmental effects that we look at were really nonexistent, such as on wetlands or very rather minor, such as in transportation and water use. Ah ha, you say, what about odor? Well, I'll come back to that, but staff, Melissa and Tom had suggested that we should not send comments because we really don't have the expertise to look at odor. And, uh, apparently, members of the committee agreed as I, they did not correspond directly with me, only with Melissa. We are scrupulous about avoiding violating the open meeting law. So I, I did say that, I did think that I would close with the comments that the ENF made about odor. The outdoor fields will be located more than 1,700 feet from nearest residents. And prevailing winds will carry the odors away. Then there will also be mechanized odor control, which delivers an odor neutralization neutralizer, neutralization agent through misting nozzles attached to exhaust fans. There will also be a host community agreement. I guess that's something required by the State Commission with the town of Hinsdale. That includes those provisions. So, Tom, would you like to add anything?
Oh, I think you've done a very thorough description of that, Roger. I will say that, um, one of the committee members said that CJ might have some expertise over, uh, so I, I don't know if CJ, you want to weigh in or I don't want to put you on the spot, but, uh,
I, I personally would encourage BRPC not to weigh in on any individual projects in Berkshire County related to outdoor cannabis cultivation. It's a it's a, it's a no-win situation that will not be appreciated, uh, in my opinion. Um, but as far as actual odor goes, like I, I mean, we may be on the verge of banning outdoor cannabis cultivation after not thinking it was going to be it, it wasn't a big issue until, and I'll just say frankly, it wasn't a big issue until there were specific projects proposed in certain parts of town. And once then there was no more interest in wanting this use in Pittsfield. Uh, but before then, conceptually, we had no concerns raised about this from anyone in the public, uh, through two rounds of adopting, uh, whether it was under the medical marijuana statute or just the adult-use cannabis. There was never anyone that came out against this, so, um, I so I, I don't know how big of an issue. We have two projects that have been approved. Um, we think that it's not going to be that significant of an issue. Um, and it's also, in our case, the two were on existing farms. And for anyone that lives near or has grown up near farms, especially in the summer, they typically smell, especially if there's livestock. So I, our boards in Pittsfield tried to use that type of logic in trying to justify comparing the potential odor from cannabis to other types of things that could be grown, livestock that could be had on site. Uh, but that didn't, so far hasn't won over um, those that are trying to put a full ban on the use. So it's, um, I, I think it's overblown personally, but it's not, you know, it's, it's not a, it's a tough, this is a tough use. And it's going to continue to be, especially for us, just like everyone, when it comes to solar, when it comes to everything else. We have so much land that this type of use is going to impact us more greatly. And I don't necessarily mean in a negatively, negative way, but there will be much more of a burden on us in the future to see these types of operations versus any other part of the Commonwealth.
Yeah.
I just wonder, CJ, I seem to remember that in Regional Issues Committee, we discussed possibility of having a presentation about marijuana odor. But the conclusion that we came to was that we didn't think that there was anybody who could objectively, you know, give an objective analysis of it, uh, because it seemed like that everybody was involved in that either had, you know, was in, had had a position about it. So I don't know if, if in your research, you may have found anybody who might be somewhat like I would qualify as neutral?
We, we had, um, we have finally found someone who we feel is, um, competent to review the indoor operations. Um, we, we had a very difficult time finding anyone interested in providing a third-party review uh, for the one specific outdoor cultivation project, which is much closer to residence than, uh, the Hinsdale project. I mean, we yeah, there, there were residents, I think, within 300 to 400 feet, so it's, um, it'd be much more visible and you know, it's just much more of a closer, uh, much more approximate, I guess, to a number of residents. Um, so we and I can't say the person in the end that we went with, um, was overly impressive, so uh, the, that's a long way of getting to, I, we've yet to find someone who I think is impartial. I think the impartiality will come from, uh, at least once we have ours online, why, at least the one should be online this growing season. And maybe both will be, but it's probably just going to be the one. So I, I think we'll have one where we can monitor it regularly and see, you know, what, what the impact really is, but we didn't think it was a big issue from a staff perspective, and that's, I, I think why we were so we tried to be progressive, at least from the perspective of, um, opening the door to consider this use.
And I think the other thing besides odor is people were upset about the fencing that was required, all of that kind of stuff. They felt that it impinged on the ambiance of a residential area.
The, the lighting issue comes up a lot as well, and, uh, that's, that's something where you basically need your local police department to write a letter to the CCC stating that they wouldn't object to not having 24/7 lighting. And not to even mention the fact that 24/7 lighting isn't good for the plants, so no one would want 24/7 lighting, um, on their property. But that, that's one of the thing, when you looked at the, the people in Pittsfield who have come out against this, uh, they bring up lighting, um, and they bring up the odor, but a lot of the, the comps they bring up for odor are from the West Coast. And those are operations that are
Huge.
significantly larger than anything we could ever consider here. So it's really not a fair comparison.
I would just like to add that it's quite possible that sometime in the future, a project, one of these projects will come up and it will have lots of other reasons requiring MIPA review. That is, there will be perhaps effects on wetlands and transportation and, um, and so forth. And then we can hardly not comment, uh, you know, especially if uh, you know, if residents of the locality, uh, you know, start to call us and so forth, call Melissa and Tom. So as a long one strategy, I would suggest, and this follows up on a comment that Malcolm made to me about this. Maybe we should, and I think CJ is, it's consistent what CJ is saying. Maybe we need to try to find, maybe we need to put some effort into finding a reputable independent source on odor. These other effects, we, we can handle. Melissa can handle those, but maybe we should, you know, try to anticipate problems down the line.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion. I know that, you know, we, we have been, you know, at least thinking about it. And there's been discussion about maybe it's another fifth Thursday topic. Um, but we'll keep looking. I'm, you know, I'm with, and you know, things, things change, so time, you know, so maybe we'll be, um, luckier now.
I, I had thought, Roger, uh, that it might be good for BRPC to have someone to serve as a resource for the towns. But the second thought, you know, any position that an odor expert takes puts them on a side. And so all of a sudden, BRPC is going to be on a side either for or against. And, uh, and, you know, that's probably not a great position to be in because it's not a it's not a scientific discussion, it's an emotional discussion. And, you know.
Well, why isn't it a scientific discussion though? I mean, there, there's ways to measure odor, is that not correct?
Yes.
And if
But we've had, we've had odor experts argue both sides of, of a project. And, uh, uh, it has to do with, uh, how you measure prevailing winds or how you measure, uh, you know, what, uh, the odor actually, the odor suppression techniques of using a chemical to, uh, to, um, mute the odors actually came into dispute because now all of a sudden you're releasing chemicals into the air. So it becomes a, it becomes a political nightmare. And I, and I suspect you know, we, we, we passed, um, uh, cultivation by law pretty widely in the town. And I thought the same as CJ, that the, uh, you know, it would be easygoing when somebody wanted to, you know, grow some on their farm. But it didn't turn out that way. It turns out that everybody who's against marijuana is now, uh, has arguments in terms of cultivation. And, and it's hard, you know, and they're, they're strong arguments. So it's, it's hard to, uh, it's hard to combat some of these things. Especially since it requires a special permit to.
You know, actually, it was a topic for a fifth Thursday that was scheduled sometime, I think, in the fall, and then that got canceled due to COVID. I, was that a fifth Thursday? There was something that Renee was trying, going to try to organize, so.
Yeah, I think we were trying. I'm not sure we ever pulled it together. Uh, and, and maybe rather than take a, a side, we can have a, you know, kind of a pros and cons or a, a discussion from, from several, um, you know, quote, quote, experts and let them kind of debate a little bit. I, I don't know if that would be useful. I think it might be better, uh, not virtual, though. I, I think it would be hard to do it virtually. Um, but
All right. The role, the role of the Environmental Review Committee and the Commission, of course, is to advise the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, I guess it is, on what what to, whether to require an environmental impact report, and if so, what should be the scope of it? And, you know, traditionally, we've done that in great detail, and we have not taken a position as to whether whether the project was good or bad. We were required, I guess, the regulations require us to discuss whether it's consistent with local and regional plans. And as I say, we're supposed to go into, and we have gone into great detail on what the, the EIR should, should include, but you know, I think we can avoid taking a position. Now, I don't know, Malcolm, that might be overly optimistic, uh, but, but we will be interpreted, I guess, as taking a position if we don't just come out flat against it.
Yeah, I, I wasn't thinking so much of the, of the Commission taking a position, but the Commission providing expertise to the town when the town is confronted with, uh, a special permit request or, or something of that sort. And that expertise itself would then become political.
I, I, I would suggest, uh, I think when it comes to that, the that's where you encourage community, especially if, and if down the road, communities are coming to BRPC looking for sense, that that's where there's encouragement to make sure that, um, you know, 53G has been adopted and that they can require a third-party review and that they, you know, require the applicant to put up the funds to so that the, the community can hire someone to do third-party review. Because I, that, that is what I was getting at before. I didn't want to say it was political, but that's exactly, it can get very political very quickly, and I would hate to see BRPC um, being pulled into the center of that, at least relates, relates all the other issues with the development. I think that I, I wouldn't say you pull back from that, but when it comes to odor, I, I think that's one that also just from the perspective of that's just not, um, something that staff, that, that you have staff that are, you know, are experts when it comes to that. So I think it's easy to, to punt on that one. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, that you need to, you know, the should necessarily back away, but I think for now, it's just until we have comps within Berkshire County where people can go and, and not just, not just Sheffield, but around the county where people can go and visit and observe, you know, it's the, the residents who are against this in Pittsfield, they're calling themselves guinea pigs. So at least the residents that are proximate to these projects. And until we actually have more projects up and running, it's tough to dispute that.
You know, there, there are outdoor marijuana, uh, growing places in Sheffield. And the residents of Sheffield actually don't mind for the most part. I mean, there hasn't been, you know, up in arms. In fact, some of the people who drive by say, we don't even know them, except during the, the budding season, and even that's not objectionable. So, I mean, there are, there are places that we have. It's just that I just don't know that BRPC should have that expertise on staff. That's, that's, that's all I'm thinking, yeah.
Well, we, we don't have that expertise. That's why our recommendation was to, to Roger that, you know, we, we, we couldn't comment intelligently, so.
I mean, it's one thing to offer a checklist of consultants. It's another thing to say, we have somebody on staff who can advise you.
And to, as I said, there was nothing else to comment on, you know, because the, the more typical environmental impacts were, were very minor, didn't even get up to the MIPA threshold.
Thank you, Roger.
Okay.
Any final questions or comments, thoughts on this? Hearing none, we'll move into the, well, do we have anything other, other for committee reports? I think we have any other committees? Executive Director's Report? Executive Director's report, Tom, any, you want to hit some highlights?
Well, one, so one thing, a couple of things just to, to mention is that the, the request for DLTA applications is out. So community should be, you know, working on getting those in. And I did mention this earlier, this community one stop program is a different way of the executive office of housing and economic development is going to be issuing grants. And I think it can be, if, if it works the way they are proposing it, I think it can be a great opportunity for communities to work with a lot of different state programs to get different types of community development projects done. So the way they're pitching this program is it, it's a continuum. It's a development continuum. So if you need, you know, planning, they'll put you into a planning slot. If you need some site preparation, they'll put you in a, a site preparation slot. If you need funding for infrastructure, you get put into another slot. But the folks from this executive office do want to work with communities on these projects and try to advise them where they are in the continuum and what available resources there are that might be able to help them. So I, I mentioned it, there have been a number of different webinars. There was actually one today earlier that I would encourage, you know, municipal officials to, you know, follow or listen to. And there's a couple of things that are immediately happening that communities can't submit. I don't know, I forget the exact term there, expressions of interest to this agency about various development projects they might want to consider. And the state agency is supposed to help communities frame those out a little bit before the actual application is due, which is later on, I think in May or, or June. So it just, I, I want to really highlight that as if folks have been using Mass Works and those types of grant programs, it's going to be different going forward.
I'm sorry, I just clarified, this is all part of the DLTA process.
No, it's not.
You're referring to the one stop, one, you're right. Okay.
Community one stop.
Thank you. Tom, the other thing on that is that the dates of all the grants, I think it's 10 grant programs, including the new rural community development funding, all of this is now going to be a unified grant date. So I think it's, it's due sometime in, in May. And so Mass Works is going to now, ASTRAP, et cetera, are now going to conform to this new date. So it's really important to know that because somebody could literally miss Mass Works date because they're going on the old system rather than the new one stop.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good point, Renee. Thank you.
It seems to me that this, in the long run, this will help the smaller towns. I think, but in the short term, it may be that they will be kind of slow to get the news, as it were, about this new procedure. So I, I think that suggests some particular activity by you, Tom, to, to make sure, especially the smaller towns, you know, are, are aware of this, even if you have to beat them over the head, as it were. I, I think, you know, larger towns like Williamstown, which for example has a, you know, a full-time planner and North Adams and so forth, that, that they will get it and, and take advantage of it, but maybe some other places won't.
Yeah, that's a very good point. I certainly intend to, to do that and have my staff do that. Is really, you know, trying to identify the community development priorities that may already exist in towns. And if not, you know, work with communities to get at least one project. You're allowed to submit up to five express projects with this expression of interest and get some feedback on those. So I'm, I'm hoping that all of our communities submit at least something.
Any other highlights, Tom?
No, I, I think that was it. I mean, I'd be glad to answer any questions on anything there.
To stay in compliance with state law, I have to announce that Renee Wood from Sheffield has joined us. Renee, alternate delegate from Sheffield.
I'm an alternate.
That's what I thought. Thank you. Moving next, next agenda item, old business legislative priorities?
Yes. So this came, you know, we had an initial discussion at the last executive committee.
Yep.
You asked me to put together some type of a framework, which I did. I emailed that out to you yesterday. And, you know, we can discuss that some more. I don't know if there are any thoughts that folks had on what I sent out, any reaction? Does it seem to make sense? Do you want to try to pursue it? Or, or just kind of go the way that we have been going, which mostly has been me and, and maybe you know, a little bit of other staff effort as much as we can with some of the important things that really jump out at us like DLTA funding and those types of things.
Well, I'll jump in since no one else is, I would suggest not doing the first option you mentioned, that is, you know, like putting together a group and trying to come up with some kind of statement in advance of the session, but at least not yet. But I would suggest doing the second option, that is somehow keeping closer track on the press, on the, the progress of both budgetary items and, and legislation. And do that for a while and then see whether that is adequate. And then, then come back and reconsider the, the other option. But that's just my opinion. I don't feel strongly about any of this.
So what if we were to ask, you know, you have to worry about the politics of who you ask. But what if we were to ask Senator Hines and possibly Representative Tricia, because she represents Pittsfield, to come in after all the bills have been sponsored and they've sorted out, you know, which bills are going to be going forward? And asking them what they see their priorities for the Berkshires to be. That's kind of a, a two level sword on this. Because there's thousands of bills filed. And at least if we know what their priorities are, we may have a subset of those that would be of interest to us. And it also lets them know that we're potentially taking a larger role of watching legislation.
We can do that. I mean, it, it's, that's actually fairly easy to do. We don't have to ask them in. Because once bills are filed, you can pull out all, you know, who, who has, there's an incredible database that you can see what they filed. We can relatively easily come up with a listing of what they've done. I, I think if you, if you ask them, all of the bills that they filed were their priorities, or else they wouldn't have filed them.
Well, but there's, there's always that, you know, you, you take actions for a number of reasons. Because your friends have signed on. I don't mean to be callous on this, but there's a lot of legislation that gets filed that's placeholders. That doesn't have a prayer. So I think, I think our legislators know what is hot, like the climate bill right now and what people are going to be pushing. So again, I also think that's important for them to come before us occasionally in a Zoom meeting now. And just kind of, you know, just, just give us an update. I'd rather hear what Adam has to say about the inside politics than, I mean, I use the legislative, you know, website all the time than trying to sort through all those bills. But whatever, that's just kind of my thoughts.
If we were to go with that example or that model, and I'm fine, but it seems like a good way to, to kind of start. Would it be more, is there more interest on legislation or budgetary items?
I think, I think it should be at least equal. If, if anything, I would want to emphasize more the budgetary items because those relate to programs that are in place. You know, and the others, as Renee said, lots of legislation filed that doesn't, you know, that is no chance of passage. But, you know, we do want to look at that, but I would actually think the budgetary progress would be the somewhat more important of the two.
I agree with that. Yeah.
Yeah, my feelings align very similarly to Rogers as well.
Okay, well, let me.
I, I have one more question, Tom, before we close this off. Did, did the legislators ever ask BRPC for advice or opinions in regard to legislation? That is BRPC's expertise in terms of, of legislation?
Not frequently, I would say. I mean, so one example was with this adaptation fund that was in, in the budget this last go around. I did get an email, you know, like about three o'clock before a five o'clock filing saying, would we be the recipient of this fund? And so that was something, and you know, I was just actually talking with our staff in this last budget. Representative Pignatelli put in some funding for a cell tower study that was coming to BRPC. And we had a discussion with Representative Pignatelli about two or three years ago. You know, he had talked about a need for us to do that. But, so it's, it's not very directive or specific, Malcolm.
We have expertise that can help these guys, don't we?
I think so.
We have the towns. I mean, you know, the, you know, we, we, in, in essence, represent a lot of the towns in terms, from the technical standpoint. Maybe, maybe we should be lobbying the representatives to look more to BRPC as, as a resource.
Well, if I could, I'm going to go back on the legislation issue. As if anybody's looked deeply at the Police Reform Act, the training requirements for part-time officers and reserve officers are horrendous. There's been a 20-step document that, I know this is kind of a biased group, the Massachusetts Police Chiefs had put out. But the, the training, as I've understood it, does not necessarily take into account that most of us in rural communities do not have everybody being a full-time officer. And, you know, this is, this, this is a concern to me because of what it's going to cost us. But also like on the climate legislation, we have talked about what that impact is going to be on rural communities if the major issue is, oh, we're all going to get electrical vehicles and we're going to raise the gas tax. So I think we have to be very much aware of the budget. But we also have to be aware of what's going on with certain legislative pieces that are big pieces that are going to affect the rural communities. So I don't think we can look at one versus the other. The timing on the legislation is different than the timing on the budget because the governor does the budget. And then it goes off and gets, you know, reviewed by the two houses, the Senate and the House. So I, I think we need to be mindful of both sides of the equation.
Well, I, I think that's fine. I, I just wanted to make sure the budgetary issues were not neglected because but yes, you know, if we identify something as big and important as that, we should definitely, we should notice it and follow it.
Any further questions or comments?
Well, so what I'll do is I'll try to connect up with the legislators at some, all or some subset of them to see, you know, their take on, you know, the big ticket items, both legislatively and budgetarily for this coming, you know, round. Does that sum up what I, the discussion was?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. I don't, I, you know, it, my initial thought was, well, let's invite him to the commission meeting in March. That is a busy time. That's when a lot of this stuff is happening. I don't know if that's going to happen, but we can certainly try to do that. Now with virtual meetings, I still think we'll be in virtual in March. You know, it's a little bit easier to kind of make time.
Anything, anything else on our old business?
No.
Okay. New business, March full commission meeting? We've got a full agenda?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we, earlier we talked about maybe an open discussion about community development priorities. Similar to what we had with the housing discussion. I think that would be useful as it relates to this community one stop program. I did, I was not able to get Jose Delgado to our, our last meeting. I did actually, I couldn't find a number for him. So I mean, I just called a Western Mass number and it took him several weeks before he responded. But he did respond and now I just need to hook up with him to try to kind of arrange that. So I still think that's a useful item. And the electric vehicle charging stations. I know that our transportation staff has been working on a plan and a program for that. Those were the items we talked about previously. It is still a ways away. You know, we can finalize this at the March executive committee meeting.
Sure. Excellent. Any other new business?
No.
Any final thoughts, questions or comments? Anybody have some parting comments? Hearing none, I'll look for one last motion.
Oh, Kyle, Kyle, can I make a comment? I'm sorry, I had to unmute myself. I want to compliment BRPC on their latest newsletter. When I read this, I just continued to be amazed at what this organization is doing. The programs they are bringing to us and just the depth of items that, that they are covering on a regular basis. I mean, I think back to what the newsletter was even three years ago and we had lots of graphics. And now there's just, you know, the, the words go from one end to another with one program versus another. So I just wanted to express my incredible gratitude for what, what Tom and his staff do. It's, it's phenomenal.
Here, here.
Thank you, Renee. I, I have to give the credit to Laura Brennan for the newsletter. I mean, she has been really, she was the inspiration be, behind our, our logo update and our kind of our overall branding effort. And that has translated into the, the newsletter, the webpage. So she has really been an inspiration for that.
That's great. That's great.
It is. It is.
Now we're going to, we're going to be transferring some of that over to Kate. So we have a high bar for you, Kate.
Okay. Okay.
But you have a lot of, you have quite a lot of experience with that sort of thing, Kate.
I was saying Laura, Laura has it very nicely set up, so.
Excellent.
Pick up her bowl.
Did, did I get a motion?
No, not yet.
Well, thank you, Sheila. Can I get a second?
Seconded CJ.
Thank you CJ. Without objection, I won't run a roll call and I'll say we're adjourned. Thank you everyone for spending a part of your day with us.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks. I hope you learned something, Nancy.
I did. You guys are so professional. I just love it.
Wait, wait till you get to know us a little better.
Oh gosh, you should come to one of our planning board meetings. Oh my golly.
My staff are there. My staff are there, so he, he knows.
Take care, folks.
All right. Have a good evening.